Welcome to the June 13, 2013, meeting of the Zoning Board of Examiners and Appeals. Please take the roll call.
Mr. Vig.
Here.
Mr. Cars.
Here.
Mr. Ron.
Here.
Mr. Patrick. Mr. Dunham.
Here.
Ms. Vlad.
Here.
Ms. Aiker.
Here.
Mr. Hart.
Here.
Ms. Dole.
Thank you.
First item on the agenda is, looks like minutes. Yeah, and it says there. Okay, we have minutes from April 11, 2013. Any comments from the board members on the minutes?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Cars. Mr. Cars first, and then Mr. Vig.
Thank you. Question on page one indicates Chair Spring. The last sentence of the first page of the minutes, Chair Spring explained that this was a rulemaking case. I think we need to correct that. I believe that was Chair Dunham.
I believe so. We can make that correction. I had that note as well. Mr. Vig?
I had the same comment.
Okay. Ms. Dole? I have a comment on the second page. Ms. Graves, I don't know who that was. Jill Graves? Okay. Okay, so it was the board secretary. All right. Any other comments on the minutes? Can I get a motion to approve the minutes as amended by Cars? Made by Mr. Vig and seconded by Mr. Cars. Any objection? Seeing none, those minutes are approved. Next item on the agenda is Special Order of Business and Executive Sessions disclosures, and I expect there'll be a few on this one. Anyone with disclosures? Mr. Vig?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. As I mentioned in my email to the other members of the board, I would like to disclose that in case 2013-082, that my firm proposed and was shortlisted and interviewed for this project. We were not selected for it, and also that my firm does maintain other contracts with the Anchorage School District, none of them at this particular site, but I did want to disclose that. I don't feel that the circumstances related to this case and my firm's pursuit of that project would impair my ability to be fair and impartial.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Vig. Ms. Dole, did you have something?
I guess my employer.
First.
My employer has also done work for the Anchorage School District and has also done work for other folks adverse to the Anchorage School District. I have not personally worked on any of the matters and don't believe that my decision making would be affected by them, but I'm going to go through and identify them so that you can make your call. Currently, we have on the books a matter involving an attorney in the Anchorage office providing his opinion as an expert for the Anchorage School District relating to the reasonableness of attorney's fees requested in litigation in a particular case involving the Individual with Disabilities Education Act. We also have a closed case involving an employment-related matter, closed in 2006. In addition, Davis Wright Tremaine, my employer, has acted adversely in its representation of other clients such as Verizon Wireless. In that case, the work relating to the Anchorage School District likely involves either purchase or lease or other environmental issues relating to cell phone towers where the Anchorage School District has some involvement or ownership. That work is ongoing, I believe. Then, recently, in 2012, we represented a client in obtaining a subpoena for records from the Anchorage School District relevant to a lawsuit in which the Anchorage School District was not a party. The Anchorage School District provided the records. There's no ongoing dispute. We also have a partner in the Anchorage office who is on the board of the Eagle Point Homeowners Association and assisted with a brief filed by that homeowners association in an Alaska Supreme Court case involving the Anchorage School District called Anchorage Board of Adjustment and Anchorage School District versus LBJ LLC. This case was decided in 2010. We've also represented an applicant who filed a bid protest for a construction project. That was resolved several years ago. We've also provided legal advice to Learning Disabilities Association of Alaska that related to the Anchorage School District, and we've also either given legal advice or represented the Anchorage Principals Association and various individuals with regard to matters involving the Anchorage School District, and these last ones were all closed, the most recent one in 2006.
Any other comments or disclosures? Ms. Aiker?
I was not present at the May 9, 2013, meeting and will be abstaining from voting on Resolution 2013-006.
Okay, thank you. Any other disclosures? Let's take up Mr. Vig's disclosure first. I believe we have to vote on this one, and I would like to have a motion from one of the board members directing the member to participate, Mr. Vig, to participate in this hearing, these hearings. Mr. Ron has made a motion. Mr. Cars has seconded it. Mr. Ron, would you like to discuss your motion?
No, just for the record, I will state it, however. Mr. Chairman, I move that the board direct Board Member Vig to participate in case number 2013-082.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Cars?
Second motion.
Okay. Any discussion? Seeing none, I just have one comment or a question from Mr. Vig. Do you believe that, you've already stated that you don't believe that this will, your decision will be impacted by your company's business with the school district. That's correct?
That's correct, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? Let's vote. Mr. Vig, you are directed to vote on this case. Let's take up Ms. Dole's request, our disclosures, and I would like a motion from the board to direct Ms. Dole to participate. Mr. Vig has made a motion. Do I have a second? Ms. Aiker. Any comments from Mr. Vig or Ms. Aiker?
I have no comment.
I don't either.
Okay, and I'll ask you, Ms. Dole, again, do you believe that any of the actions by your firm would impact your ability to render a fair decision tonight?
I do not believe they would impact my ability to render a fair decision.
Okay, thank you. With that, I ask you to vote. And, Ms. Dole, you are directed to participate in the meeting tonight for the Anchorage School Let's move down to the consent agenda, and we have two resolutions to approve. And I, pardon me, I'd like to get a motion to approve the resolutions on the agenda, or to pull any motions, to vote on them separately. Mr. Cars, you are moving to approve both resolutions?
Yes.
Mr. Vig is seconded.
Yes.
Both resolutions have passed. Okay. See, next item on the agenda is appearance requests, and we have none tonight. There's no unfinished business or actions of public hearings on the regular agenda. We do not have any resolutions for approval or anything else, which moves us down to the public hearings. The first case on the list tonight is case 2000. Before I get started on our variance hearings tonight, I have to basically go over the order of business for hearing a variance. Tonight, we'll be hearing two variance requests. We have three on the agenda, but one's been postponed. The chair will introduce the variance request, and I'll read into the record the case number and the name of the applicant for the record. The staff will present a sufficiency of notice, and then the board will rule on that sufficiency. The staff will then provide a brief presentation outlining the variance request. The board and the applicant may then direct questions to staff through the chair. Then the applicant will give their presentation with the burden of proof resting upon the applicant. The applicant will have 10 minutes to make their presentation. The board must be convinced by preponderance of the evidence that the variance should be granted. Upon the conclusion by the applicant, the board and staff may direct questions to the applicant through the chair. The hearing will then be opened for public testimony. All persons testifying may be questioned by staff, the board, or the applicant. Each person testifying will have three minutes. At the conclusion of the public testimony, staff, followed by the applicant, will be able to provide rebuttal testimony. The chair will entertain a positive motion from the board to grant the variance, which must be seconded. Board will then develop oral findings and conclusions based on their decisions in the variance request. Every final decision of the board will clearly state on its face that it is a final decision. Every decision made by the board may be based on written findings of fact and conclusions which are supported by the recorded proceedings. The findings will be sufficient to provide reasonable basis for understanding the board's decision. The board's findings will specifically address why the criteria has or has not been met. The staff will reduce the oral findings and conclusions to writing for later adoption by the board. Any person that is aggrieved by the board's decision may appeal that decision to Superior Court within 30 days of the written notice being delivered to that person. So with that, we'll move forward to the first case on the agenda, which is a postponed case. That's case 2013-039. It's corporate leasing, and it looks like it is postponed until, and I'm not sure, do we have to vote on this? I'd like a motion to postpone the case until July 11, and I have a motion from Mr. Cars and a second from Mr. Vig. Any comments?
I do have a comment, Mr. Dunham. Just a question for staff. Is there a requirement for the petition? This is, I believe, our second or third postponement of this case. Is the petitioner required to pay a new application fee?
This last time around, they did pay the postponement fee.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Dole?
I will have disclosures to make concerning this case, so I will abstain from voting on this.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Vig, did you have anything?
No, I don't, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Any other discussion? Seeing none, let's vote. Okay. Case 2013-039 has been postponed until July 11, 2013. Next case on the agenda is 2013-081. The petitioner is Jacob Malouf. Is the petitioner present? Will staff present a sufficiency of notice?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On May 22, there were 65 public hearing notices mailed to the public within 600 feet of the property. At the time this report was written, two responses were received. One public comment supported the granting of the variance; the other public comment opposed it. Both of those public comments are on Page 40 and 41 of your packet, and an additional letter of support came in and was routed to you with the packet. It came in after the report was written. The petitioner provided two letters of non-objection from the adjacent neighbors to the north and to the east, and the mid-hillside community council did not comment on this case.
Thank you. Is there any comments from the board about the sufficiency of notice? Seeing none, present your case, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. There's an as-built of the property on Page 6 of your packets. The petitioner is requesting front yard setback variances for three existing sheds. One is under construction but is pretty much built. Photograph of the largest shed is on Page 17 and 18 of your packets. The northernmost shed is currently under construction and is the largest of the three sheds with 518 square feet. The shed crosses over the front lot line into the Birch Road right-of-way. The southernmost shed is 120 square feet in size and was built by the previous owner sometime between 1986 and 2009, according to property records. It is not eligible for grandfather rights, non-conforming rights for a structure. The middle shed is only 98 square feet in size, and it's undetermined when that one was built. All three sheds are located within the R6-required 50-foot front yard setback. One of the provisions of code allows for a shed that has 150 square feet to be located in the side yard or the rear yard. So two of these three sheds would qualify for that, but they're located in the front yard, and so they're disqualified. The petition site has a two-and-a-half-story house, which is located within the 50-foot front yard setback as well. The house has non-conforming rights for its location, 18.1 feet encroaching into the front yard setback. In regards to the standards, standard number one is met. The property slopes downhill to the west, as do all the properties west of Birch Road on this section of Birch Road. There's a significant slope affecting approximately 1/3 of this property. Topography map to evidence that is on Page 7 of your packet. Also, there is a large area of uncompacted fill west of the driveway and the corner of the house. The uncompacted fill affects approximately 3/4 of the property, leaving only the east 1/4 of the property developable. I would direct the commission to look at Page 9 of your packet. If you look at Page 9 and you look at the petition site within the Checkered Square, you can sort of see, if you look at the vegetation, the dark color and the light color, there's a big sort of half-circle west of Birch Road, and that big sort of circle appears to be some sort of, you know, illegal fill operation or something from maybe the 50s, but many years ago. But there's something going on here. There certainly is some uncompacted fill, the extent of which might be quite large but impacts this property in particular. Standard number two. The standard does not appear to be met. The petition site is larger than the standard R6 suburban residential lot. The Building Safety Division finds that all three sheds may be placed on the uncompacted fill due to their low weights. Therefore, there are conforming locations on this property for all three sheds outside of the front yard setback, rear yard setback, and side yard setbacks, and without having to be placed on that steep slope, very steep slope, on the rear of the property. Standard number three also does not appear to be met. The encroachments were discovered by a code enforcement officer during a routine drive through the neighborhood. The sheds could be constructed on the lot without the need for a variance, and therefore the hardship is considered self-imposed. Standard number four, the standard is met. Two of the sheds have existed unnoticed on the property for many years. The new shed that is under construction does not appear to adversely affect adjacent properties, and the most affected neighbors have provided letters of non-objection. Standard number five is also met. The sheds do not change the character of the zoning district. Standard number six is met as well. No health or safety issues have been identified. Standard number seven does not appear to be met. There are conforming alternative locations for the sheds on the property. The department finds that standards 2, 3, and 7 do not appear to be substantially met and therefore recommends denial of all three variances. If, after the public hearing, the board finds that all seven standards have been substantially met, then the approval should be subject to conditions 1, 2, and 3 on Page 5 of the packet. Condition 1 just says to record the notice of zoning actions, the standard condition. Condition 2 asks for the owner to obtain an after-the-fact building permit for the sheds or for one of the sheds. The other two would not be subject to a building permit because they're less than 150 square feet, so it would just be the large shed. And then, condition 3 states this variance approval is from minimum yard requirements to allow three accessory structures within the 50-foot front yard setback as shown on the as-built. So if the board, in its discretion, may choose to deny all three variances, approve all three variances, or approve variants for, you know, the northernmost shed or the middle shed or any combination that the board wants. The petitioner, Jake Malouf, and his family are here, and that's all that I have. Thank you.
Are there any questions for staff? Ms. Dole?
My question goes to the comment you made about that the sheds could be put on the uncompacted fill because of the weight, and my question goes to how close to the limit is it, and would that be changed depending on what would be, if heavy things would be stored in that larger shed?
Through the chair, thank you for the question. The short answer is that I don't know the answer to your question. After reading the comments provided by Building Safety and by the other reviewing agencies, because so much of the property is affected by, nearly all the property, except for a small portion, the property is affected by uncompacted fill, I asked the Building Safety Structural Plan Reviewer directly, Ron Wild, who provided the comments, well, then where would the sheds go? Because the front yard setback is 50 feet, and the house already encroaches into it. And he said that none of the sheds are on foundations, and that the largest shed, he said that it only had so many pounds per square foot and that it was not heavy. And he said it was essentially if a really big man stood on one foot in the uncompacted fill, you know, that's not enough weight, even on uncompacted fill, to cause it to settle and to move and all of that. So that's how it was explained to me, and I've relayed it to you now, that the Structural Plan Reviewer for Building Safety believes that the largest shed could be placed on the uncompacted fill. Under normal circumstances, no, he also explained to me that no structure, whether it be a very light shed like these or anything heavier, should ever be placed on uncompacted fill. It's typically a rule of thumb to prohibit it, but because people are entitled to have their sheds, he believed that, you know, through discussions, he would approve the location of a shed or these sheds on the uncompacted fill due to the nature of so much of the property being affected by the uncompacted fill. That's the way he explained it to me.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the board or questions of staff? Seeing none, will the applicant come forward and provide their presentation? And when you speak into the mic, if you would, give us your name and spell your last name.
My name is Jake Malouf, last name N-A-L-O-U-F. I'm here with my two children, Jessica and Benjamin. My wife wanted to come, but we were both in charge of My wife wanted to come, but we were both in charge of a youth backpacking trip, and so she's down there, and I'm going to hopefully run down and catch her down on the keen eye after this. Before I get started, I'd like to reserve two minutes of my testimony at the end for rebuttal, if needed. I'd first like to thank everyone for being here tonight. I know that it's sunny out, and I appreciate the efforts that you've taken to review my To fully explain my case, I think I need to do a little bit of background information on here. First, I appreciate the efforts of the city to improve the city and make sure things are developed in a safe and aesthetically pleasing way. My wife and I moved here in 2002, trying to, with the plan to try it out for a year or two. And you know how the story goes. We've fallen in love with it, fallen in love with the trails, the city, the people, and the city of Anchorage itself. And we are very invested in staying here and making sure that is developed properly. There have been problems in the past, and we want to make sure that things move forward smoothly. And it's in that spirit that we are doing this petition. We want to make sure things are done in proper order. Also, that's one of the reasons we built this shed, or wanted to build the bigger shed in question, is to help keep things safe and aesthetically pleasing. We bought the property where the shed is located, 9430 Birch Road, in 2006. The previous owner had, he was somewhat of a Jeep enthusiast. The property was littered with probably 20 engine blocks and stuff all over the place. Several truckloads, semi-truckloads of stuff were donated to various clubs, or sold, or thrown in the landfill. So we've made significant efforts to improve the land, clean it up, and make it a safe place for our children to be raised. In 2011, we had the plans to build this shed, simply means to store our raft and canoes and some fishing gear and that sort of thing, to keep them protected and out of the elements. The house doesn't have a large garage, it's just a small, standard two-car garage. Most of the homes in the area have very large garages, and this didn't have that. And then there were these two other smaller sheds that, you know, one's for wood and chickens, and the other's just for little things. So we needed a larger shed. We began, we considered all the locations on the property. As has been explained, it's lots of uncompacted fill, using the rule of thumb to not build on uncompacted fill. In fact, the house itself has already kind of settled in one corner and had some damage. So we wanted to avoid any complications. We looked where our views were, what the neighbors would see, where existing foliage was, what grading needed to happen, and determined that this spot where the large shed is currently located is really the only feasible place for it. It's located, you can see on the photos, there's kind of two entrances to the driveway. It's located right in between those two entrances. There's just kind of a large, flat area that's not affected by the uncompacted fill. It was just dead wood in there. So we cleared out some of the dead wood and decided to build the shed there. It would afford, you know, access from the driveway, and also be a safe place where it was protected by the trees, that didn't affect any views from ourselves or our neighbors, and was well away from the street. We were careful to, our understanding at the time was we just needed to be 15 feet from power lines and out of any type of utility easement. So we judged where the existing sheds were, and, as it turns out incorrectly, assumed that they were out of the easement, and tried to put those in line with those sheds, taking care to be at least 15 feet from any power lines, and then well away from the street and any type of issues there. So we began building the shed with the honest, to be perfectly candid, honest understanding that we did not need a permit. It was a storage shed with a non, no insulation, no electricity, no non-frast heave-protected foundation or anything like that, and just thought it was a storage shed. So we began building it, excited to be able to put our stuff in it. As it turns out, we were mostly finished with the shed. Walls were up, roof is up. It was essentially, we just needed to put the roof panels on the top and paint it. At that point, an inspector saw the shed, and he put a stop-work order on it. So we immediately, the next day, we went and talked to the city. The inspector himself said, "It's not a big deal. Go get a permit, and you can finish building your shed." We went there, and in the process of applying for this permit, that's where we found, for one, we needed a variance, and for two, the shed was well inside that setback. And so it kind of got this whole cascade rolling. So we've, we just, at that point, the winters came. I think in the report, it does note that we did have probably a third of the roof panels on at that point. Winters were coming, winds were coming, so we did get permission from the city to remove those panels, make it at least safe. And so we did that. That winter, we had the record snowfall. The shed shelled up just great. We did take care to build this, it's built well. It's built over code, if I might say. In the spring, we wanted to prevent further damage to the wood and the structure itself while we were going through this application process. So we did paint the, with some verbal, nothing official, but verbal permission from folks at the city to basically cover and protect the shed. So we did throw a quick layer of paint on there and through the roof panels on top, just so that it wouldn't be a wind vortex and keep the wood protected. We intentionally did not complete the shed, or put doors on it, or do anything, because we felt that would be going against the, you know, the request of the city to not finish working on the shed. So that's where the shed stood. It stood like that through this last winter as well, through some record winds, and again, heavy snowfall did just great. So it took that amount of time, about a year, to get all the required letters of non-objection from the utility companies, from the state, and all of which have provided letters of non-objection, and see no issues with the shed in its current location. So finally, we got all that squared away, and then submitted our variance application this spring. And here I stand now, hoping that we can keep the shed. It's really the only reasonable location, given the circumstances and what we know about its location. Is there a timer? Or how much time do I have? Okay. So there, I believe the items two, three, and seven were considered or appeared to be not met. I believe they are met. First, the item number two, the shed is in the, it is in the only feasible spot, given the fill.
You're at two minutes right now.
Oh, so I'm in my rebuttal period of time?
If you want to reserve it.
Okay, I'll just speak real quickly. It's in the only feasible place for the shed. It's uncompacted fill everywhere else. It's unreasonable to put the shed in the middle of the yard where it's the only open area, which would be an offense to the neighbors and with unknown results about settling in the future. Variance three is met for similar reasons. It was an honest mistake, as far as building the shed without a permit. We've since learned we need one, and it would be a hardship to build this shed anywhere else. It would require compacting the fill or regrading it, as far as we're concerned, to build it properly. And item seven, we believe, is met. The variance is, would make reasonable use of the land in conforming with the surrounding neighbors and everything else that's around there, and allow us to use this land properly, protect our equipment, and keep it aesthetically pleasing. So I will stop at that point and reserve anything I have left at the end.
Okay. Do we have any questions of the petitioner or the applicant? Mr. Ron?
Thank you through the chair. Mr. Malouf, thank you for your presentation, and thank you for being here tonight, knowing that the hike might be more enjoyable for you.
Yeah, it certainly would.
Question about this uncompacted fill. Do you have any additional data about the potential extent of that uncompacted fill? Have you had any geotechnical borings or data to help enlighten the board as to where exactly that?
Yeah. Well, on page, there's a report from Eurotech, which is a company, I'd have to look at the page real quick. But yes, we do have evidence to support the fact that the fill was there. It has resulted in significant damage to the existing house even. And other than that, I don't have any geotechnical reports. We did have a soils test done when we put in the new septic system when we bought it in '06, and it did confirm the fact that it is fill. They dug up old stumps, and bits of metal, and fencing, and things. And then, other than that, verbal testimony from neighbors who witnessed all that fill getting dumped there in the late '70s from the development on the hillside. Thank you.
Mr. Big?
Thank you through the chair. Mr. Malouf, on your, on the site plan I'm looking at on page six, I was wondering if you could speak to the need for, you know, basically two driveways onto Birch Road. And what I'm getting at really here is, I know that the state is somewhat restrictive on the number of access points onto their state routes, and having two driveways is somewhat unusual, but not unheard of. But what is it about your situation that makes it impractical to locate the largest shed on a portion of the driveway that's, say, I don't know, 25, 30 feet to the west?
Yeah, thank you for the question. And I suppose we could put the shed in the middle of our driveway, which would put it on the compacted fill portion. The driveway with the two entrances, that's how it existed when we purchased it. We believe for safety issues, it is very nice to have those two entrances, and it is a needed issue, just because of the Birch being adjacent to Birch Road itself. If you've ever been in that area, people blast up and down that road, and there is no parking. There's zero margin or shoulder to park. You can't park on the street itself. And so being required to back in and out of a driveway onto a busy street is a safety issue. We would prefer not to put the shed in the middle of the driveway for that reason.
So it is possible for you to, say, come off of Birch Road, turn into the southernmost driveway, and into your garage, and then back out of the garage, and drive out, straight out of the, I mean, in the forward direction of the car, out on the driveway?
Yeah, theoretically, that would be possible. We do, it would represent a significant inconvenience to our family. Just, we do host a lot of events at our home. We're, as mentioned, we're heavily involved at the church, and we're, we usually have upwards of 10, 15 cars in that driveway. We would not be able to do that if we didn't have the ability for cars to circle in and out like that.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Dahl?
Yes, I would like to know, I guess, to ask about the, one of the non-objection letters said that it would have to be moved out of the right-of-way for Birch Road within five years?
Right. She's referring to page 35, if I'm understanding correctly. This was, we received a letter of non-objection from the state. We initially applied for an encroachment permit, but the state didn't feel like they could grant the encroachment permit until we had the variance. And so instead of granting the encroachment permit, they wrote a letter of non-objection stating that they don't have any issues with the shed. They also stated verbatim that we should make plans to move the shed in five years. And I believe that is a matter of common order for the state to cover themselves. I believe the report that's listed on page 35 is an incorrect interpretation of the state's letter, because they in fact made no requirement that the shed would have to be moved in five years. They indicated that we should make plans for that in the event that it would need to be moved. But I did check with them, and there are no plans for widening Birch Road anywhere within the next 50 years, so I don't believe that that would be an issue. But we, obviously, if it came to that, we could. But there is no requirement to move the shed in five years. And you can read the report on page 36, the next page, what that page 35 report is based on. It basically says, "Please be aware that the department reserves the right to rescind this non-objection any time, and you should make plans to move the improvements out of the right-of-way within the next five years." I see no explicit requirement to move it, though, unless it becomes necessary. On that note, I will add that we had, we didn't think it was in the state right-of-way. In fact, we thought the whole shed was well within our property line. It wasn't until after this fact, when we applied for the variance and had the as-built, that we discovered that the corner of the shed, it jutted about a foot and a half, two feet into the state right-of-way. So if it came to that, moving the shed out of the state right-of-way would be a doable venture, because it would still maintain the shed in its, basically in its current location, but would just scoot it out of the state.
Okay. Any other comments from, or questions from board members? Mr. Cars?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Malouf, for your presentation. And you've obviously gone to a significant effort to get the number of letters of non-objection. I'm still having a hard time seeing how standards two, three, and seven are met. And again, we must find that all seven standards are met, granted a variance. And when I look at your site plan, I can't help but think that the reason for your locating the shed where you did was for personal preference. If it was me, I'd not want to impact my view, but also needing to meet the setback requirements, moving it onto the west side of your driveways would seem to be a conforming location and not require any variance. Can you attempt to try and convince me otherwise?
I'd love to. I think you're partially correct. Obviously, we do, for personal preference, we would like it there, but there's more to it than that. If we were to move it to the west of the driveway there, I don't know if you can tell from the photo or the topography, it is sloped. It's a, you know, a significant slope. We would need to bring in significant grading and fill, and remove several mature trees, unless we put it right next to the house. So we didn't feel that that was a reasonable option. Also, if we were to put it there, it, I, it would just, it would, I think, well, I suppose it would block our view a little bit, but it would also be extremely visible to the neighbor's view. And I think our main intent with putting it where it is, is we wanted to have it be a reasonable place for us and the neighborhood and surrounding area, putting it in the middle of the shed. In fact, one of the, I noticed the comment that was submitted in favor from one of the citizens. He noted, he's, I happen to know who he is, I didn't realize until after. He's across the gully from us, and he has a perfect view of our yard. And he was one of the people that we wanted to make sure didn't have to look at an ugly shed. And he has seen the shed, he likes where it's at. I talked to him beforehand just to make sure he'd like it there, and he said that would be a great spot. And so it's mostly consideration for our view, our neighbor's view, and also the amount of effort that it would take to bring in fill to level out the land to the west of the driveway.
Thank you.
Any other questions from board members? I have one. On page 26, you've got a, what looks like a letter of non-objection for an encroachment permit from Chugatch Electric, but it really only addresses one shed clearly. And it says for the larger shed, they want you to consider one of two options before they do that. Could you talk about that a little bit?
Yeah. Page 26, the first one, it addresses one of the smaller sheds. I don't think they even acknowledged the second, even smaller shed. But they did, they had no objection to the first small shed. The second one, this was, this took a while to get this letter of non-objection. Chugatch, as a routine, they just don't write these. They either ignore them or don't write them, just because they prefer not to. So they finally consented to write a letter of non-objection with two contingencies. One, they just, in the event that they do need to bury the power lines on Birch Road, they want to be able to bury those without asking us or having to remove the shed. And so they're, what they would like us to do to keep And so they're, what they would like us to do, to keep, to keep them happy for official purposes, is to bury conduit underneath the shed, which, and just leave it empty. So in the event, within the next, you know, 100 years, they need to bury those lines, they would be able to access that conduit. Obviously, we can't do that until we have permission to continue working on the shed, but we feel that that's a reasonable compromise that Chugatch came up with. There's no foundation that we'd have to remove or dig up, so if they need us to bury some conduit, we can do that.
Okay, and to the best of your knowledge, you're holding to this agreement, because this is almost a year ago that they wrote this letter?
I couldn't hear the last part.
To the best of your knowledge, you're still holding to this agreement, because this letter is almost a year old.
Yeah, to the best of my knowledge, this is where it stands.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Seeing none, you're welcome to have a seat here.
Okay.
We'll open it up for public comments now, public hearing. Anyone interested in testifying in this matter can come forward. Seeing none. I'll close the public hearing now, and, let's see.
Did I have any time?
Yes, you had one minute and four seconds left, so. We'll hear rebuttal testimony from staff.
I'll just, staff would like to make just one comment. On page seven of your packet, the hand-drawn topography map, I, I just noticed only now that it didn't copy very well, so there is a pencil sort of, this is hand-drawn, but the, the sort of the pencil shaded area showing the uncompacted fill doesn't show up very well. So if you can just sort of see faintly little sort of blotches of shading, what's actually on the original shaded is everything west of the driveway and the corner of the house is all shaded as uncompacted fill. It's not just the little sort of circle area of uncompacted fill there. It's meant to, this map was meant to show that, that three-quarters of the property was affected by uncompacted fill. And just be mindful that the house is already encroaching several feet into the 50-foot front yard setback. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Does the applicant have any rebuttal he'd like to offer? Oh, pardon me, before we, yeah, go ahead.
My turn still?
Yes, your turn.
So I guess no rebuttal to that, but I will say, talking to the neighbors, they talk about when thousands and thousands of truckloads were brought in, it's, the whole lot essentially is fill. If I, I have some photos that I wanted to pass out that may be helpful.
If you turn them in, we have to hold it for the period of appeal, or?
Say that again?
They'll have to become part of the, the hearing record, and we'll have to hold them for as long as?
Oh, you can keep them.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, that's fine. What I did is I, I just, if it, if it's helpful, I drove up and down Birch Road the other day and just found several other structures that are also in R6 zoning, that are sheds or fences or structures that are built well within this setback, just so, I don't know, I know, I realize precedent isn't the, probably the best word, because every variance case is unique, but there are several, several places affected by this situation, so I, the first page shows three buildings, and the last page shows our, our structure.
Yes.
Okay. Were there any other comments or questions from the board for either the petitioner or Seeing none. Oh, Mr. Ron?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I slid in there at the last minute, I thought. If I can ask the petitioner one more question, I apologize for not doing so earlier. In scanning through building safety's comments, it seemed like that building safety had a position on whether or not a permit would actually be issued for, for the shed. Have you addressed that with building safety at all, and if so, can you?
Oh, yeah, you're, I think you, there were some comments on page 29, where the person who wrote this felt that he didn't, that the shed did not appear to be sufficiently structurally sound, and questioned whether a permit would be issued. I, I, I'm not sure how he would make that assessment, seeing as how no permit was ever obtained and no inspections have ever been made. I guess my rebuttal to that would be, the shed has stood unfinished, mind you, for over two winters now, with no, no impact. It's, it's very well-built, and I would have no issues obtaining a permit for the shed. So.
Thank you. Anything else from the board? What's the will of the board in this matter? Can I get a, a motion, a positive motion to, on this case? Still waiting for that motion. I'll pick somebody if, Mr. Cars, thank you.
I'm surprised everyone, he wasn't jumping at it to try and get out this evening and enjoy the sun, but I think that-
Mr. Vig seconded it. Mr. Cars, would you speak to your motion?
Yes, in the case of 2013-081, I move that we grant a variance in the R6 district, a variance from AMC 2140-080G, which requires a 50-foot front yard setback in the R6 district to allow three accessory structures in the front yard setback, subject to conditions one, two, and three on page five of the staff packet.
Mr. Vig?
Second Mr. Cars' motion.
Okay, Mr. Cars?
Yes, thank you, through, Mr. Chair. I, as I'd indicated to the petitioner, I'm, I'm really struggling with standards two, three, and seven in this case. I appreciate all the comments that the applicant has made, all the effort that he's gone through to get his sign-offs, and he's, he's really worked very hard, I think, in, in his presentation. I commend him for that. We have to find that all seven standards are met, however, and I concur with staff regarding two, three, and seven not being met. I'm most concerned about the, the large shed that encroaches into the right-of-way as well. I, if I was in the petitioner's position, I, that's exactly where I'd want to put the shed, I appreciate that. However, we do also have to look out for all aspects of the public, DOT, utilities, while he has sign-offs from the utility companies as a whole. So this is, it's very hard as a board member to want to grant the variance, but needing to, as a board member, find that all seven standards are met, can't find that those three are met. So at this time, don't intend to support the motion, but I'd be more than interested to hear other board member comments as well.
Mr. Vig?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I concur with staff's analysis on standards one, four, five, and six, and I, I do believe that, that those standards are met, and, and agree with Mr. Cars and staff on standards two, three, and seven. I just don't, Mr. Cars put it very well, as much as we may like to be able to grant the variance, it's very difficult to see, in my case particularly, number, number seven, that that being the, the minimum variance. I think there, I think there are alternative locations, particularly for the two smaller sheds, but also for the, for the larger shed to be moved further to the west, and understand it would compromise the use of the property somewhat, but I still think that it would grant rights commonly enjoyed by similar properties in the zoning district, and so I think those standards, in my mind, remain unmet, and I, unless convinced otherwise by other board member discussions, will, will not vote in support of the motion.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Vig. Any other board comments? Mr. Ron?
I'd like to thank Board Member Cars and Vig for stepping up to the plate and, and discussing as you did, and I concur with the findings that you've put forward, as well as those of, of staff. I don't intend to support the motion either, concur with Board Member Cars, and appreciate the petitioner's presentation this evening. It does appear to me that there are some reasonable engineering solutions that could be put into play without the presence of, of fixed foundations. These are sheds that, that can be moved without a relatively large degree of hardship. The fact that the larger shed does extend beyond the, the petitioner's property indicates to me that this clearly isn't the minimum variance that will make reasonable use of the land, so I do not intend to support the motion.
Okay. Ms. Wadd?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Is, is there any reason to consider separating the buildings, as far as consideration?
I think there's, you know, that's certainly up to the board. We can do that and vote on each shed individually, if that's the way the board wants to go, because I think they, all three of them, share the common issue, although the, the degree of encroachment is, is different from one building to the next.
And my understanding is the, the two were already there, so that is different in my mind than what was, or currently constructed? Is that right?
As I understand it, yes. But if we were to consider the buildings individually, you'd, you'd have to amend the motion, and if you want to do that, you need to make a motion to amend the motion.
I guess I would request some of the other board members' input on that.
Okay. Are there any other comments about separating out the buildings? Mr. Cars?
I would, I would second Ms. Wadd's motion for the purpose of discussion, if she, she felt strongly that she'd like to further discuss separating it out.
Okay. Mr. Vig, as the seconder of Mr. Cars' motion?
I would have no objection to that.
Okay. Well, let's go ahead and discuss that. Is that, is that the, the wish of the board, to divide out the, the three buildings individually and vote on them separately? Mr. Cars?
I was wanting to make sure we had the procedure down, and so how about if, and Ms. Wadd, if, I'm assuming you're discussing the two smaller sheds, and so if, I'd be willing to amend my motion to split this out and first address the larger of the two, or the larger of the three sheds, and then, so maybe, perhaps I'll, I'll amend my motion in this case to split this out and have our first discussion with respect to the larger or shed that's approximately 16 by 32 square feet, and discuss that variance first, and then we could discuss-
Okay. Mr. Ron, did you have a comment?
It's unfortunate we don't have Mr. Patrick here as parliamentarian to help us through this process tonight, but if we want to try and take a stab at it, perhaps Board Member Wadd should amend the motion. We then have discussion and vote on that amendment to the motion, and then-
Agreed.
Pursue through that, that process.
So, Ms. Wadd, would you make a motion to amend Mr. Cars' motion? And I'll need a second on that one, and then we'll vote on the amendment.
Okay, so bear with me here, we'll see if we can do this properly. I move to amend the motion previously stated on case 2013-081 to request a variance from AMC 2140-080G in the R6 district to allow two, one shed under construction to encroach into the required yard setbacks.
Okay, that's one motion, and then, do I have a second on that?
For the record, I'll, I'll second.
Mr. Ron, second's that motion, and just for clarification, that's the shed that's under construction that's shown on page six. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. All right, let's vote on that motion to amend the motion to vote on the larger shed. That's unanimous vote, so let's move forward then with this discussion, unless we've already had that discussion. Do we have any other comments? Mr. Cars?
No, just for the record, I'd, I'd just like to state my, my discussion regarding the original motion, motion applies specifically to the, the shed, so for the record, indicate that.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Cars. Any, Ms. Doll?
I just want to see that, that the staff, the standard is being one, four, five, six, five, six. Sorry. I agree with the staff that standards one, four, five, six are met, and I agree, I guess for the reasons stated by Mr. Cars and Mr. Vig, I, I am unable to find that standards two, three, and seven are met, and will not support the mo, the motion for the shed.
Thank you, Ms. Doll. Any other comments from any other board members on the shed that's under construction? I would like to add my comments to this. I will also not be supporting this request. One, because I think this, this particular building is, is a fairly large one, and it does not only encroach 100% into the setback, but it's on public property as well, and it looks to me like some of the agencies that were involved that wrote letters had some concerns about the building as well. So I don't intend to support this request and concur with the comments made by previous staff, our previous board members. So with that, let's go ahead and vote on the larger building that's under construction. Okay, and that vote is, that variance request was denied for the, the building under construction? And that vote is, that variance request was denied for the building under construction. May have a motion on either one or both of the buildings remaining.
Okay. For the other two buildings, I move a motion in case 2013-081 to allow a variance from AMC 2140-080G in the R6 district to allow two existing sheds to encroach into the required yard setbacks.
I, okay, I have a second from Ms. Aiker. Ms. Ladd, would you like to speak to your motion?
Yeah, and I'm just, I'm going through and reanalyzing based on the separation.
Hold on a second, Ms. Ladd. Apparently, we need to make that motion in the form of an amendment of the original motion to break out the other two buildings, to amend Mr. Cars' original motion. So if he could do that and then.
Okay. So in the case of 2013-081, I move to amend the original motion put forth by Mr. Cars to allow a variance in the R6 district to allow two existing sheds to encroach into the required yard setbacks. Is that adequate?
Correct. And then it's seconded by Ms. Aiker. And go ahead and address your motion. Ms. Ladd?
Okay, I'm just going to kind of walk through with everyone here. So in taking a look at these other two buildings relative to item two, three, and seven, I feel that with regard to the hardship being self-imposed in, that this is not self-imposed, that these facilities were there when they purchased the property. So I feel that that standard has been met. I feel that relative to standards one, four, five, and six, I agree with staff that they I feel that in standard seven is substantially met. There's limited area on the property. Relocating all three sheds could prove to be difficult, given the area of uncompacted fill. And in standard two, I believe that there would be exceptional hardship placed upon the property owner to relocate all three buildings, in this case, the two buildings.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Aiker?
Thank you, Chair. I don't have anything to add other than to note that the two smaller pre-existing sheds encroach very little in comparison to the large shed and were there previous to the homeowners purchasing the property. And for that reason, I intend to support the motion.
Thank you. Any other comments from the board? Findings? Ms. Dole?
I appreciate that these sheds are much smaller and also that they do not encroach into the utility right-of-way. But in response to Ms. Aiker's last comment, I was looking at the last page of our packet, 48, where it says that the 10 by 12 storage shed encroaches approximately 38.5 feet into the required 50-foot east front yard setback, and that 8.1 by 12.1 shed encroaches approximately 42.4 feet into the required 50-foot east front yard setback. But I do think it is, you know, looking at page six, where the 10-foot telephone and electricity easement is shown, that the encroachment into that area is much less by the two smaller sheds. I'm still struggling with determining whether some of the findings are met. And I would appreciate any thoughts as to whether, as to the fact that the sheds were there previously and how that goes to the comment of the planning staff for standard three that, that it's, that, I guess, the fact of prior owners constructed without building permits. But, and anyone else's thoughts on standards two, three, and seven?
Thank you, Ms. Dole. Any other board findings? Mr. Ron?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And thank you, Board Member Ladd, for walking us through that process by amending Mr. Cars' motions and allowing us to further discuss the sheds on a more individual basis. As staff points out, these two sheds wouldn't be before us if they were not in the front yard setback. Realize that the way that the lot is positioned in relation to the street, clearly this is by planning and zoning standards, they front yard setback. If the board is entitled to consider the way that the property is used and the existing vegetation and separation from the road as mitigating factors in an application of this front yard setback, it appears to me that perhaps due to the vegetation and visual separation from Birch Road, that this could look to me like a side yard or a backyard. And in that sense, a strict application of the code may not be optimal in this case. And for those reasons, I could find that standard seven is at least partially met. And in further discussion, it was standard seven that tipped the scales for me in addressing the larger shed. I appreciate Board Member Ladd's comments that requiring the petitioner to move all three sheds could be both considered a hardship and also perhaps constraining based on square footage and availability in other areas of the lot. So I can also find that standards two and three are at least partially met, if not met, for the smaller sheds regarding the physical circumstances of the land that we've heard about today regarding uncompacted fill, slope, and also other amenities on the property. For those reasons, I intend to support the motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ron. Are there any other findings by the board? Seeing none, let's vote.
For clarification, we're voting on the motion to amend, or?
I think we're voting on the variance request already.
Okay.
Looks like all the votes are in. And it looks like the variance request for the remaining two buildings was granted with one vote in opposition.
Mr. Chair, do we still have a motion on the floor? Mr. Cars' original motion, or has it been dispelled with our directions?
I believe that was amended with this vote here. Mr. Malouf, the decision of the board is final. You'll receive a written finding from the staff. Within 30 days of receiving that finding, you can, if you feel aggrieved, or anyone else feels aggrieved by the decision of the board, you can appeal that decision to the Superior Court. Thank you for coming tonight. Okay. Let's move to next case on the agenda tonight. And that's case 2013-082. The petitioner is the Anchorage School District. Is the petitioner here? Yes. Staff, will you present sufficiency of public notice?
Yes, we received 54 public, sorry. We sent out, mailed 54 public hearing notices on May 22nd. None of those came back with any objection. And we did receive a letter from the Girdwood Board of Supervisors with a, they sent a letter of non-objection to the variance request.
Thank you. Any comments from the board on sufficiency of notice? Seeing none, present your case.
The school is kindergarten through eighth grade. They are undertaking a renovation of the school, and that renovation includes a gym. The school is located in the GIP zoning district, which limits building height to two stories, not to exceed 35 feet. The variance request is to increase the building height from 35 feet to 44 feet. This is needed to accommodate the gymnasium. The Anchorage School District and National Standards recommend a clearance of 25 feet for gymnasiums in order to play basketball and volleyball. Moving on to the findings. Standard number one, the standard is not substantially met. Native vegetation occupies all areas of the site, not in use by these school facilities. The lot is mostly level and does not have exceptional physical circumstances, nor physical, sorry, physical circumstances are not exceptional or extraordinary. Standard number two, the standard is not substantially met. There are no physical circumstances of the property that would deprive the school district from rights commonly enjoyed by other properties in the same GIP district. Standard number three, the standard is partially met. A, there is no physical condition of the lot which relates to the need for this variance. But B, gymnasiums are commonly included in schools, and decisions have been made that the school needs a gymnasium. However, the height limits in the GIP district do not allow sufficient clearance to meet the minimum standards needed for volleyball and basketball. The petitioner has stated that the height of 44 feet is necessary to meet the various project requirements, and these include not only clearance for athletic activities, but for the structural requirements to span 72 feet, the roof slope to match the existing adjacent roofs on the school, and the parapet heights to retain snow and ice. The allowable building height in the GIP district at 35 feet would deprive the Girdwood community of an athletic facility that meets minimum clearance standards and structural requirements for roof span. Standard number four, the standard is substantially met. If granted, the variance would not have an adverse effect on adjacent properties. The school is isolated at the end of Hightower Road and is also surrounded by areas of native vegetation. Standard number five, the standard is substantially met. The requested variance to allow a building height of 44 feet to accommodate the gymnasium would not change the character of the zoning district, nor permit a use not permitted in the district. Standard number six, the standard is substantially met. No adverse health, safety, community welfare issues have been identified. Tonight, all of the board members received a packet of comments from Girdwood residents. Numerous emails were, came in over the last two days. We had to cut off printing and copying of the, these emails about 2:30 this afternoon, and after that time, about four more additional comments came in, and all those four were also in support of the variance request. Standard number seven, the standard is substantially met. The petitioner's mittel indicates that they could use a steel roof system rather than the exposed heavy timber roof trusses, and it would result in a reduction of that roof height by two feet. But the wood trusses are proposed in order to meet the Girdwood regulations, which encourage the use of natural materials or materials that resemble stone and wood. That's all I have?
Thank you. Are there any questions for staff? Mr. Cars?
Yes, through the chair. Ms. Ferguson, on page two of the packet under site description proposal, there's discussion that stating when the Girdwood regulations were implemented in 2005, the height limit for public buildings did not consider the height needed for school gymnasiums. And then if I go to page seven of the staff packet, there's a, this prop, the school property and one adjacent property is GIP, zone GIP. So walking me through the process, the zoning for property in Girdwood is specific and unique to Girdwood itself, correct? And that was, those regulations were put in place in 2005?
Through the chair, Mr. Cars. Yes, the standards for Girdwood are separate. They have their own design standards, their own zoning districts. That's unique to Girdwood.
Thank you. And through the chair, understanding that these are unique to Girdwood, do we have the same, in Anchorage, does Anchorage have the same height limitation for sites that would be zoned to accommodate a school? Do you know?
Yes, we do, but I couldn't tell you what those are. I didn't bring my copy of the code tonight to look that up for you. But yes, there are height limitations.
Okay. And I guess jumping back to my original question, in 2005, when the Girdwood land use regulations were put in place, I'm assuming that was a pretty, there was a pretty significant involvement of Girdwood residents that voiced their interest in those regulations at that time. It seems like we've had a fairly significant number of Girdwood residents that have voiced their thoughts on this petition before us as well. That be safe to say?
Yes, you're correct. Yes, when the, those regulations were passed, they were preceded by a lot of community involvement.
And is this the first, I'm sorry, I don't. And is this the first -- I'm sorry, I don't -- my last question, is this the first site, first time the school has come before us in the last eight years then in Girdwood?
Yes, it -- I don't think it's come -- anything regarding the school has come through anyone at all since it's probably built in 1981.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carrs. Ms. Dahl?
I just want, in a similar vein, I was curious about the comment on page two describing the proposal that says the planning division is considering amending the regulations to allow a greater building height in the GIP district?
Yes, because of this request for the gymnasium and having to increase the height, you know, looking at it, we probably realized that when these regulations were put in, passed in 2005, we probably didn't consider a gymnasium in association with the school. I think we were just thinking more about public buildings, and we couldn't imagine that for Girdwood, they would need a public building that exceeded thirty-five feet. But we didn't think about the gymnasium and the height that would be needed for clearance.
Is there a concrete -- is there a process going on, or is this still being just considered?
It's being considered at this time. We've got a lot of changes to make to Title 21, and when that -- we're still going back and making tweaks to Title 21. And when -- once that is completed, we can start to look at Girdwood, and it's a simple matter, but it's just, it takes time. It would just change in the ordinance and getting it passed. But it just, it requires time, and we don't have any time right now to take that on. But it is something we would consider doing.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board for staff? Mr. Hart?
Through the chair, could you give an estimate on how long it would take for that planning amendment to be changed? I mean, any estimate at all?
Mr. Hart, I would be reluctant to give you any kind of, even a guesstimate. Title 21 is our, you know, is our priority right now, and after that, we could consider working on the Girdwood regulations.
One more question, Mr. Chair.
Sure.
In the instance that we don't find all seven standards have been substantially met, has there ever been a case in the past that, or is it even possible for this board to push a decision to the Assembly for approval?
Is that for me or for staff?
Not sure. Whoever could answer that question?
Well, generally, the Assembly doesn't get involved in our decisions here with the zoning board. Our decisions are subject to appeal. Go ahead, Ms. Dahl.
Just a couple months ago, we considered making a recommendation.
Could you speak into your microphone, please, Ms. Dahl?
Just a couple months ago, we considered, we had before us our recommendation to the Assembly, dealing with a birthing center, and that was a change to the regulations that we recommended. I'm not, I guess my question is whether or how this would be different.
Well, in that particular case, and I will defer to staff on this, but in that particular case, there's a regulation that allows the zoning board to determine whether or not a use is permitted in a district.
That's right.
Okay.
Yeah.
What we're doing here is determining whether or not this height is permitted, and the recommendation would be to the Assembly on the use in the case of the birthing center, and then the Assembly would make the final decision on that. We wouldn't necessarily have that final authority for that particular thing, but we do on variances, and that's what this is. It's a dimensional variance. So I think that's the difference, is that we have the authority under regulations to determine a use and make a recommendation to the Assembly.
Thank you.
Mr. Hart?
I guess the real question that I have is if we don't find that all seven standards are substantially met, does that mean that, is there another route for the school to be able to build a gym? Or is that going to be essentially the end of it until the planning commission decides to change the regulation?
Well, they would have appeal rights. There's other option would be to wait until we can change the regulations in Girdwood. And their other option would be to, I don't know, build at thirty-five feet, which would really limit the use of that gymnasium.
All right. Any other questions for staff? I had one question, and it's, I don't, it's semi-tangential to this, not really. Did the Urban Design Commission, do they review public facilities in Girdwood?
Yes. It's funny you should bring that up. The school was before the UDC just last night for their site plan and landscape plan review. And it was mentioned, Mr. Carlson mentioned at that time, that they would be going before Zebra tonight for a variance request.
What was the decision last night?
They approved the site plan and the landscape plan, the concept. For UDC, projects go through twice. They go through for a concept review at thirty-five percent completion, and then they come back at about at least seventy-five percent completion, anywhere between seventy-five percent and ninety-five percent for their final review. Last night was their first, their concept review.
All right, thank you. Any other questions for staff? Seeing none, will the petitioner come forward and provide their presentation?
Thank you. I'm Michael Carlson with McCool Carlson Green Architects, and with me tonight are Calvin Munt and Mary Carey, project managers at the school district. And there's some folks from Girdwood community and the school here who, if they choose to testify, will introduce themselves. If I could, we could fire up Elmo. I've got a few graphics that I could share with you.
Mike, you may need to put the on switch on the left-hand side. No, on the -- yeah.
Yeah, before we get started, also informally, UDC last night told me to encourage you to approve this variance, because without this variance, the aesthetics of the building will probably suffer in their purview. And related to the schedule question, the board has approved the bonds. This project needs to move forward to be bid in the winter of this year for construction next spring. So we will be doing whatever we need to do to move this project along. If it means compromising the design, we'll need to do that. So we're hopeful tonight that you'll agree with us that it is within your purview to approve this variance, and we can move on with the project design the way it is. Just a little bit of context from the aerial photo. This is the existing school, and this is the community library that will be, will need to demolish that community library, and our addition sits kind of right in this location. As you look at the site, you'll notice that there's not a lot, there's nothing else in this photograph. There really aren't any adjacent subdivisions or community buildings. It's a fairly isolated site, beautiful rainforest hillside on the backside, a wooded area in front with an AWW easement, then Glacier Creek, and then the airport on the other side. So this height variance certainly won't impact any adjacent property owners. If we look at the massing diagram for the building itself, again, let me get that lined up a little better. You see the existing school, it's a single-story structure, and then this is our two-story addition right here with the gym in the back and the classroom, two-story classroom space in the front. The roof slopes match the existing building, and the building's articulated in response to the Girdwood building requirements. That's one of the reasons the dormers, dormers bring in some natural light to the classroom, but they also create a smaller-scale facade that responds to the Girdwood building requirements. We're also proposing parapets around the perimeter of the building. They've got a really serious problem, not only with drainage, but with safety with snow and ice coming off the roof. So we're going to internally drain the school, put parapets up, and solve that problem for them. All those things are factors in addition to the clearance that staff mentioned for the gym that generate our need for a little bit more height than the thirty-five foot. In your packet, we've given you a diagram which shows how we calculated that. Our calculation, and of course, we're early in design, but our calculation is that the midpoint of the gable was forty-three foot two inches. We're asking for forty-four, just to give us a little bit of wiggle room, considering the stage of design. We think that that's kind of the minimum required to accomplish, to address all this kind of balancing of design and function that we need to do to make this school the best it can be for the community. So I'm going to address primarily the three comments, first three comments that staff is recommending denial on. First, I want to make sure you, I think you understand by now, that there's no real downside to this variance. The community supports it, the school supports it, the land use committee unanimously approved it, the Board of Supervisors have issued a letter of non-objection. UDC approved it last night, and the only written comments that have been received have been in support of this variance. As I said, there's no negative impacts to surrounding properties, and by approving this variance, you'll allow this community to have a recreation facility, a school and recreation facility that's equivalent to the kinds of facilities that we have here in Anchorage right now. This is the closest, Anchorage is the closest place where they can really get to a regulation-sized gym that has proper heights. So that's really the crux of why the variance is being requested. Now, the staff report is recommending denial, and that hinges primarily upon their interpretation of standard one, two, and three. And their assertion is that the variance isn't appropriate because it doesn't arise from the characteristics of the site, or the physical circumstances is the word that the standard uses. But we think they're taking a fairly narrow view of the site, saying it has to be kind of the natural aspects of the site, and we think that that's unnecessarily narrow and not really consistent with the way this board has operated in other cases. First, standard one does include language but not limited to, so it's open-ended in terms of considering things other than those specific items that are listed in standard number one. And as I mentioned in other cases, and I'll have one example, I don't have a lot of experience with you, but I have one specific example I'll talk about later on, where you've considered roadways, buildings, parking lots as part of the physical circumstances of the site. We think the school is a physical circumstance of the site. It was built in the eighties. These regulations came in in 2005. You should be able to consider that in your deliberation. The public school in Girdwood is a completely unique circumstance. There's only one public school. There's not likely to be another one in the near future. And so the physical circumstance of this school being on a GIP site is not applicable to other GIP properties. That's a unique circumstance, physical circumstance of this particular site. The granting of variance, ASD is not asking for special privileges or some sort of advantage for them. What they're really trying to do is they're trying to serve the community, the school and the community with better facilities, trying to make the best facility they can with the limited funds that we have. And strict application of the thirty-five-foot height limit will create an undue hardship for the school and the community, the owner, ASD, and MOA and the community, by depriving them of recreational facilities that the rest of us in Anchorage enjoy. Now, the example, I was involved with the variance that you granted in 2012, February 2012, for the UA Sports Arena. And in that particular case, the issue was that UA wanted to utilize some parking in the library parking lot, which was across Providence Drive from the arena, required crossing a minor arterial, which required a variance from you folks. And that was approved. In standard number one, you state that the physical circumstances of the classification of Providence Drive has a minor arterial, and its location in the university's and medical district is a circumstance that UA cannot alter. So here we're talking about configuration of roads, existing parking lots and parking structures, the site location that the university's chosen for the arena. All these, none of these things have to do with wetlands and trees and topography. They're physical circumstances that are impacting the site, and that was part of your consideration, and that was, you found that it did meet that requirement. We think Girdwood is a similar circumstance with the existing school on the site that you should consider or be able to consider. Standard number two was met, says there are exceptional circumstances in the UMed district. It has a unique nature and that it is shared by four major institutions. As I've just talked about, the location of the school on the site in Girdwood is a unique circumstance as well, that you should be able to consider that as a factor. Standard three was substantially met. UA has undergone an intensive public process in the siting of the facility with a recognized community consensus solution. They've been talking about the school in Girdwood for years, first about the educational program, should it be continued the way it is, should it be high school? Then they did a master planning process, some site investigations, and now we've gone through this design process, we're ready to build something for them. So there's certainly been an extensive public process to get to this point, and the solution, we believe, is optimizing these factors. So with that, that concludes my testimony. I do have a written version, a summary of what I said that I can provide to you, so you can refer to it and be happy to answer questions.
I would like you to address standard seven.
Standard seven, okay.
In particular, the request for forty-four feet as opposed to a lesser amount such as forty-three point two, or even a lesser amount if a steel roof system was used.
Correct. Our philosophy on that is that we're going to, we need to request a variance. There's no negative impact to the community. If we're going to request the variance, there is really no change in impact to the community and the situation if it's forty-three feet, if it's forty-four feet, if it's forty-five feet. So to maximize the value to the community, try to allow us to get the most economical design, we wanted to ask for a variance for a height that would give us flexibility to get the right kind of structure. Sometimes you have a little bit deeper structure, you can make it more economical. At this stage of the design, that's why we picked forty-four. There's also issues with topography around the site. Our height measurement actually starts five foot out from the building, and we've got some serious drainage problems out there, so we're going to, we're looking at sloping the grade away from the building fairly significantly. So we've assumed that we're going to, we've got about two feet of slope between the face of the building and that five-foot line, but depending on how the final design works, you know, that may need to be two foot six, or maybe it's one foot six. There's some adjustment and fine tuning that might need to be made. So our feeling is that if, with a variance of forty-four feet, that gives us the flexibility to accommodate those decisions, make the right decisions, and that asking for less, there would be no substantial benefit to any parties. So that's why we asked for forty-four. So that's why we asked for 44.
Thank you to the Chair, Mr. Carlson. Thank you for your presentation. I was wondering if you could speak to us about physical circumstances of other GIP land that is perhaps on the petition site or adjacent to the petition site. Looking at page 7 of the staff packet, I see some shading, and I'm unfamiliar with that shading. Is that floodplain? Perhaps staff could talk to us to that effect, and if you could also speak to the question.
I'll let Sharon start that, if she would. So you're looking at which page now?
Page 7 of the staff.
Page 7.
The local map.
Sharon, can you enlighten us on what the shading is indicating?
Yeah, I'm looking at that, trying to figure that.
Is that wet floodplain area? Because it looks like it's in the creek and Beaver and Tiny Creek and that sort of thing.
Yeah, you would think that that would be it, where the creek is, but it's pretty extensive in that area if all of that is floodplain.
Well, that's true, yeah. Maybe Mary knows. Hey, Mary knows.
My name is Mary Carey. I'm project manager on this, through the design phase of it, and have been sort of involved for the past two or three years in it. I believe the shaded area, our floodplain areas, the one to the southwest, I have my directions wrong, to the right of the site is the, probably the Glacier Creek coming down. And then the one to the left that shaded, that doesn't extend farther up, is the one that has, is California Creek, California Creek and the Tiny Creek. Now, what I also have learned that's not on this map too, is that they stopped the shading at that point and haven't continued it farther up because we have two creeks that are very close to the school's site. Actually, our parking lot is, our bus turnaround drops off the edge into it, sort of with the Beaver Pond that we're going to use for education. But they haven't researched the floodplain above that, so we potentially have floodplain even farther up the creek area or up through the site.
Thank you very much.
Any other comments from, or questions? Ms. Dole?
There've been several references made to the height, to the existing building.
Mm-hmm.
And so I wanted to know what the maximum height of the roof of the existing building was.
The peak of the existing building is around 30 feet, 30 to 32 feet. And by, of course, you'd measure it for zoning purposes to the midpoint of the gable, so probably for zoning purposes, it's probably in the range of 25 to 26 feet.
And my, I have one other question. I'm looking at the materials, the cross-section height analysis.
Mm-hmm.
I'm looking, it looked to me like there was, I guess that there's a, please correct me if I'm wrong, I guess it's just the parapets that are significantly higher in this and that, and most of this is, looks like at 36 feet high or lower, other than those parapets? I'm not sure if I'm reading it right.
The parapets, we're shooting for a parapet height of about three feet. As you know, they get a lot more snow down there than we do, and we want to try to contain that snow. So that's been our kind of design goal, is to have a clear distance from the roof surface up to the top of the parapet of about three feet. And that's what this is set up at. And we're going to try to do that all the way around, not only the addition, but if budget affords, we're going to do that around the existing school as well.
And one last question, which is, you've touched upon, which is sort of the preliminary state of these plans versus how, I mean, if we, if we granted the request and authorized, you know, 45-foot or 44-foot maximum height, I mean, what seems to me these plans could be changed to substantially increase the height of throughout versus, you know, sticking with what's shown on this cross-section?
Well, certainly, if you grant a height of 44 feet, we won't exceed it or we won't get our permits. So we'll, we can, I'm confident that, I've been in this business for, I don't know, since '75, however long ago that was, almost 40 years now. I'm confident that with this diagram, we can achieve that 44-foot clearance and meet the goals that the project has. So, but if we did exceed it, we would have to come back for another variance and believe, believe me, we don't want to do that. And one of the reasons we're here right now is that we need this kind of approval in the early stages of design, because after we design the roof, we get our structural engineers involved and the whole systems design, that it's a very expensive process to go back and redesign it. If we had to come back and said later on, oh, we got to build a flat roof instead of a sloped roof, the school district would be looking at a pretty substantial bill for redesign. And that's why we're here early on, is because we need you, we need this variance to move forward with confidence. If we don't have confidence that we can execute this design, then we'll have to modify our design. And we really have a couple of options for modifying the design. One would be to lower the height of the gym, which would impact the functionality of the gym and probably eliminate the running track, elevated running track around upstairs. Or we could go to a flat roof. And the Girdwood Building Regulations discourage large flat roofs. So we would have to go back to UDC and the Girdwood Board of Supervisors and the community to see if that was an acceptable aesthetic solution for the community. And so there's some risk for us in that process as well. So we're trying to, the reason we're asking for this variance is to get kind of firm footing so we can move ahead with the design, do it cost-effectively and with confidence, and really serve the community the best we can.
Any other board questions? I have one, well, just a comment here. And it looks like on page 10 of the board packet that Steve Ellis identified this as a special flood hazard area, and that you'll have to have permits for all your work and structures that require a flood hazard permit. Looks like the ball field. You're building on top of the existing structure, correct?
Yeah, one of our design strategies has been to eliminate, eliminate as much as we can, any impact beyond the existing constructed pad. We don't want to touch the existing mature vegetation, the trees, the watershed. So we do have to go through all the kind of the drainage filtering things, but we are building on the existing pad, which is outside of that floodplain area. So we're not anticipating any special requirements for floodplain.
Would you say that the, kind of the visual orientation of the building is more horizontal than vertical?
The existing school has a very horizontal aspect of it. Because we're building a taller structure, ours has a little bit more, our addition has a little bit more vertical aspect to it. So we tried to break it up in different ways.
Okay. All right. Any other questions? Does staff have any questions of?
Mr. Carey, don't.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. With that, we'll open up the public hearing, and anyone interested in testifying can come forward. If you would, state your name for the record and spell your last name.
My name is David Chadwick. I'm representing the Girdwood Board of Supervisors this evening. I believe I get five minutes for that one. But I just wanted to make a couple of comments here. First, this is actually kind of fitting, because 20 years ago in May, I would be celebrating or I would have been graduating from my kindergarten graduation class there at Girdwood Elementary School. I'm probably the only one here who's actually gone to that school, that's not, you know, a student now. But in my current capacity, working on the Girdwood Board of Supervisors, we have a couple of assumptions here that we're working with. Firstly, we are assuming that this variance request is the one that was presented to us with the edits and the changes in place that were requested by the board and by the fire department. One of the things that you'll see there, the reason that we had that 35-foot height limit or was written into our codes is because there was a major safety consideration with the fire department and being able to access those industrial roofs. Because when you're able to get up on top of the roof and cut a hole in the roof, you're able to ventilate, you're able to take and prevent a whole lot of damage to the structure. And so that was one of the major considerations. And that was one of the things that was brought before the Board of Supervisors when we took and had this discussion with the architects and said, hey, we need to take and go back and consider some of these heights and how we can take and go around this. The Girdwood Fire Chief and the Girdwood Board of Supervisors reviewed it with the architects, and we're very confident that they've made those changes and we're happy to move forward on the project. Secondly, given Girdwood's unique environment and the history of structural issues that we've had with Girdwood School, we assume that the architects have adequately addressed the concerns for the design. And that's where those parapets come in. I'm not sure if the board knows this, but in the winter of 2007, or, excuse me, of '97, I was in fifth grade then there at the school, but part of the school collapsed. The entryway, the school was not built for Girdwood. It was not built to the design standards that you would need for an environment that gets 700 inches of snow a year in the mountain. You know, it wasn't built to those standards, and we saw that in the structural collapse. So, you know, we're trying to, you know, we're happy with the way that they've come and said that these parapets will keep the snow off of our kids, and we can melt that out, and we can keep, you know, the structure stable. Finally, we are assuming that ZIBA has received our letter of non-objection, and we're also aware of the unanimous vote of support from the Land Use Committee, including the review by the Girdwood Fire Chief. I have a comments here from Janice Crocker, who's also on the Girdwood Board of Supervisors and speaking for the Land Use Committee. Said, please allow me to talk for the Land Use Committee meeting that addressed the issue. Girdwood strongly supports getting the school built and has no problem with the variance. We have no problem with the aesthetics presented. We do not care about the bizarre municipal code requiring that one large building look like a series of smaller buildings. And the only concerns voiced at a very heavily attended meeting, thanks to the camper park issue, were around the issue of snow load on the roof and around the maintenance and expense of a facility that might be a bit fancy for utilitarian Girdwood, especially as an architect, as working closely with Fire Chief in a proactive manner to address all the safety concerns. I cannot imagine what objection planning and zoning would have to possibly continue. Of course, she thought it was, or didn't know it was ZIBA. I suppose in my comments here, you know, we have a history of poor construction and planning for some of these community buildings. And you have to consider that this building for our school is the most important building in the entire community. It's a multi-use facility for multiple agencies.
You have one minute.
Right, I can finish in a minute. But it's a multi-use facility that is used by a lot of our different community members. It's where we house our youngest kids. That's where they go to school. And finally, in our comprehensive disaster management plan, that building is the shelter. That is where people go when they can't get out of our community, especially since we only have one road in and out. And to address my previous comments, I think it's a little bit embarrassing because the things that need to change in this school have not. I hope that we can do a better job for my children in the same hand-me-down school that was never built for our community. Don't get me wrong, I really do love Girdwood School, but I would implore this board to accept the variance and help us bypass further obstacles to stand in the way of this important project. We are so close to finally having a building that the community has worked so hard for. So thank you very much.
Perfect. Are there any questions for Mr. Chadwick? Seeing none, thank you.
My name is Molly Hickox, H-I-C-K-O-X, and I am a teacher at the Girdwood School and a member of the community and the parent of two Girdwood Elementary School students. I just want to reiterate a lot of what David has already said, but for me, this project, and I will say, I hope this is the last time that I have to speak in favor of this school project, because I've been through this whole process, through planning and working with the architects and developing the ed specs, and we are so close. And for me, this is really an equity issue for our students and our community. Our middle school students have never had a middle school-sized gym. It's really hard for them to be competitive when they come to Anchorage for high school when they've never played volleyball or basketball in a full-size gym. And as David said, this building, our school is our community. This is where everybody in the community does sports. We don't have a recreation facility. We don't have any other facilities for our kids or any of our community members. So this is just so vital to our community, and I just urge you to support this variance so that we can move this project forward. I cringed a little bit when I heard a delay or something. It's a minor miracle that we've come this far and that the Anchorage voters have supported us and got our bond passed and that we're this close to actually remodeling our school. And I'd just like to urge you to please pass this variance for us. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for the, no questions. Okay.
Hi, my name is Emily Hickox, H-I-C-K-O-X, and I am a student at Girdwood School and will be going into middle school when this remodel is finished. And I think it's very important that we have a full-size gym so that we can, like, I play soccer, indoor soccer in our gym, and it's a small field because it's such a small gym. And if we have a bigger gym, we can play sports and be more competitive and ready for high school. I know that a lot of my friends like to do a lot of sports in the gym, and I hope you agree to make our school a better place and make our gym bigger. Thanks.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Okay.
Good evening. My name is Pat Price. Last name is spelled P-R-E-I-S. I'm a long-term resident of Girdwood. My sons have both gone through the Girdwood K program. I'm a longtime volunteer at the school, and I don't represent the Capital Improvement Advisory Committee of the ASD tonight, but I do sit on that committee. And I'd like to support and reiterate everything that has been said by folks on this, at this microphone this evening, in support of granting of this variance. But I'd like to bring a little bit different perspective to the issue. The Capital Improvement Advisory Committee has been considering this renovation of the Girdwood School for many years. It goes back before my membership on the committee, many years. The planning has been completed. As you are aware, we're now in the design phase, and this past April, the voters did approve the bond issue, which includes the construction funding for this renovation project. So I would say that time is of the essence here. The Girdwood community, which has been mentioned, heavily uses this facility, has been waiting a long time. I'm very confident that the architects are doing I'm very confident that the architects are doing the best they can to provide a safe and aesthetically pleasing building. I'd like to reiterate what has already been said about there really is no downside to granting this variance. The school is not within the site, as far as I know of, any residences in Girdwood. The site is semi-remote in that respect. It's, it's a very beautiful site, but it's out of sight of residences. There's just no need to consider nearby neighbors and whether they would object. The parapets are essential in this plan, which is really the need for the height variance, I think, because of the snow load and the requirement to keep the snow from shedding off the roofs. The Girdwood community needs a full-size gym right now. There's no gym in the school. It's a multipurpose room that serves as a gym. The school does not have a gym. And this, this renovation would provide a full-size middle school gym as well as other enhancements for the school. I urge you strongly to find a way to approve this variance request. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions for the? No questions, thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to testify on this matter? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed and the matter is before the board. So I'd like to have a motion from one of our board members. Positive motion, Mr. Ron and Mr. Vig. Mr. Ron?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. In case number two thousand thirteen dash zero eight two, I move that the board grant a variance from AMC Table twenty-one point zero nine point zero six zero dash five to allow the building height in the GIP district to exceed district regulations of two stories, not to exceed thirty-five feet, according to Division Recommendation Number One on Page Six of the Staff Packet.
Mr. Vig?
Second, Mr. Ron's motion.
Okay, Mr. Ron, you want to speak to your motion?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to start by sharing a quick story about my educational upbringing and the sports and that I was able to play, thanks to an adequately sized gym that I grew up with. Not only physically educating me, but also in terms of science and things like that. We had a gym that was perhaps forty-five or fifty feet in height, two or three stories, open trust design, and balls would get stuck at that height. And I would always wonder how those balls got up there and hope that other children can, can have that similar educational experience, not only of trying to get balls stuck that high, but also of wondering how they got stuck that high as well. All that said, I don't intend for that to bias my decision or anyone else's on the board. I'll go ahead and speak to the seven standards. I'll start by saying that I agree with staff's recommendations regarding standards four through seven and find that those standards are substantially met. Starting with standard number one, I asked the question of Mr. Carlson regarding other GIP land and physical circumstances affecting that land, both on the petition site and adjacent to it, in trying to get a better understanding of placement of the school. I don't accept Mr. Carlson's, I don't accept E X C E P T, Mr. Carlson's argument that the facility itself should not be considered a physical circumstance. I won't deny that fact, but I'd like to speak more to the physical circumstances of the property. One of my understandings of the intent of this code, this portion of the code, is to limit height, perhaps to protect views and view sheds of other properties in the area. I don't see that being a concern as discussed by the petitioner, this being an open property. The placement of the property, to me, in part was to ensure the school was out of that floodplain and at a slightly higher elevation. So if that can be tied to the height standard, then I would find that standard one is, is met. Again, I'd welcome the board to test that argument and open for any discussion there. Following with standard number two, I find that strict application of the code and that height standard would, without a doubt, create an exceptional or undue hardship to the entire community, as, as discussed by the petitioner and members of the public. Following through in standard number three, I find that hardship is not self-imposed and special conditions and circumstances do not result from actions of applicant. I find that standard three is at least met, if not substantially met. For those reasons, I intend to support the motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ron. Mr. Vig?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would agree with Mr. Ron's comments. And with respect to standard one, and putting this site in context with other GIP-zoned lands in Girdwood, the minimum lot size for GIP is eight thousand four hundred square feet. This lot is twenty-eight, let's see, I looked at it here a minute. Twenty-eight, almost twenty-eight and a half acres, in excess of a million two square feet.
Wow.
It, as the standard states, has a maximum height restriction of two stories, not to exceed thirty-five feet. The minimum width is seventy feet. So you could, you can understand why on that size of a lot, a thirty-five foot dimension in height would be of concern. On a twenty-eight and a half acre site, I believe it's much less of a concern, particularly when there aren't any residential or other uses that might, might be impaired by, by a height, slightly, building slightly over that height. So I think standard number one is met. I agree with Mr. Ron's analysis that standard number two is met. I believe it would create a hardship to strictly apply the code because of those circumstances, it would deprive the community of, of the uses that we've heard about. And standard number three, I believe the standard is not self-imposed or that the hardship is not self-imposed and that standard number three is met for the reasons of having to comply with the educational programming requirements, the Girdwood aesthetic plan that they want to have in place. And all of these things come together, and often these things don't meet very cleanly. And I think this is an example of that. So I don't believe that's the, the result of actions of Anchorage School District or the architect in this case. And so I believe that that standard is met, as well as staff's analysis of the remaining standards being, being met. So I intend to support the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Vig. Mr. Hart?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I agree with what was previously stated with, by the other board members as far as the findings and the findings being substantially met. The other things that I think weighed pretty heavily for me were the planning division's consideration of amending the regulations to be a greater height for something specific like this. And the petitioner's comments related to a previous case that was heard by this board and the other circumstances that were considered in that case. So given those two as well, I will also support the, the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Hart. Anyone else? Seeing none, let's vote. Okay, your variance is passed by a majority of the board, everybody that's here tonight. So I need to inform you that any agreed party can appeal this decision within thirty days of the written notice being issued. Thank you for coming tonight. So that completes our public hearings for tonight. And moving down the agenda to reports. For the chair, I have none. Secretary, are there any reports from the planning? Staff, did you have anything you wanted to?
No reports. I just wanted to say I appreciated Mr. Chadwick's testimony about why that thirty-five foot height limit was chosen. It had to do with firefighting abilities in Girdwood. That was good to know. Tom Nelson was our so-called expert on all things Girdwood. And when he retired, everything that he knew about Girdwood went with him. So that was good for me to know, to learn that.
And I, I think that, you know, you could probably take some, when you look at revising the code, look at the PLI code, there's some provisions in there that allow you to exceed that height if you provide additional setback, so. Any other comments, board comments, tonight?
Mr. Chair, I have one. Just, just a request by board members. My, my wife and boys have accused me of having poor hearing. And I think it's more selective hearing with them. But at the, these meetings, if you could try and speak up, it would help me a lot. All the board members.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Dole?
I have a question, really. And I would have made it earlier, but it didn't occur to me. But when we framed the motion, it was the request to allow the, the building height to exceed the, you know, the district regulations not to exceed thirty-five feet. But I didn't hear us attach, like, you know, forty-four feet or forty-two feet. And I just wondered, does that mean it's forty-four because that's what they requested? Or?
Generally, it's based on, on the, on the application that's provided to us, unless, unless it's a very open-ended thing. And I think then it's up to us to limit it. But tonight it was limited.
Okay, fine application.
Mr. Ron, did you have?
Just briefly, I noticed that we passed a resolution from two thousand and seven. There wasn't much discussion on that, but that Mr. Dunham and Mr. Cars were on the board at that point in time. I don't want to tie hearing issues to age. But thank you for your longstanding service to the board, Mr. Cars.
I think I remember that case, too. Unfortunately, yeah. Okay, if there are no other comments, we stand adjourned.